It's a project that's $50,000. It would not have a significant cut like those that cost more. And in as a the county and during our budget, oftentimes we've taken like a 15% cross the board cut. So I'm just giving out a number. So those are things that we could consider. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Recognize Mr. Wright.
Just looking at it from a risk management liability situation. I was thinking that would be possible like on the front end to kind of go ahead and cut those items that we already know are high risk. And it may put the county in a potential risk management or liability situation. Why wait till the end to do that when we already know it? So if we already know that these items are high risk, why not go ahead and deal with those? So that when we're when the council is dealing with funding the organizations that those items are already been removed. And that's not on council because it's already been done.
Yes, sir. And so that was one of the items that I did have an opportunity to discuss with ACA Thomas. As I'm when I opened the meeting to send that that would be one of those tasks that we would ask administration to do prior to bringing the list back to the committee. So that we'll already have those numbers and those items backed out and would be able to do exactly what you're saying. Administrator Brown.
I think that it's a good practice in general. But I think one of the things we need to understand from the body is what is your risk tolerance? So you have the numbers that are provided by the consultant, which are general information. Where they're saying to you that at this threshold, we believe that you should mitigate your risk. But as a risk taker, you have to determine as a body, what is your level of risk, which may or may not be the equivalent of what my level of risk is as the county administrator or the county attorney. So.
Which would be very low.
So the point of my bringing up is that part of this conversation, this dialogue really is council member, committee member decision to administration, rather than administration telling you further how to navigate this risk. Because as the attorney just said, he might knock a lot of people out because of the risk threshold that he is not going to want you to consider. So just kind of keep that in mind that we can do that. But we need to understand what your risk tolerance is rather than what my risk tolerance is as the administrator or the county attorney.
Thank you for that Administrator Brown. Because I do definitely think that we want to take in consideration. You know, I'm somewhat of a risk taker. I just believe somebody took a risk on me and I fared out pretty well, in my opinion. So but I do understand also that we have to establish what that what those risks are. And so with that, I would like to further ask the attorney and as well as administration to provide us with some guidance on the risk levels. And then as a committee, when we come back to have that discussion at our next committee meeting, then we can determine what recommendation we would like to provide to full council as it relates to our overall recommendations of risk. So we go ahead and back those things out as a committee. Saying that, hey, this committee is saying, you know, we are at a 15%. And I don't think you take risk at percentages, but I'm just use that example. The committee is stating that we're going to do a 15% risk taking. And this is where we draw the line. And thus, this is the recommendations that we make accordingly. So any guidance that you all can provide to the committee as we prepare for our next meeting, I think would be helpful.
Please, ask me at what point I see I can I see one application that I think that it's a duplication of services. So at what point should I identify the application?
Is your question whether or not you would like to make a a recommendation that the committee not consider it an applicant because you believe it to be duplicate of services?
Or the committee to investigate? Because I think that the county has already funded the services being requested by the same application. So at what point, I'm just wondering what point in the process? I know this is a work session. So should I submit that particular application to administration? Or how should I do it?
Yes, ma'am. So if you believe there's a duplication of services being provided through another funding mechanism, you can just say to us, you have to do it publicly right now if you don't want to. You could send that information to ACA Thomas and we'll review that against what we know.
Yeah, because I don't want to state it publicly because I want to verify that it actually is. Okay, thank you.
Ms. McBride, Mr. Brandon.
Thank you. To the to the prevailing discussion here as of late, it seemed like there was a reference to some items being pretty clearly ineligible by statute that would be in here. And then perhaps it's a second category where there would be items also that would be deemed high risk. So I would propose that as a request to staff that we at least have those two categories kind of called out on an application by application basis. And I assume by high risk, we just mean risk of not complying with the ARPA requirements? Is that is that what we're referring to?
Yes, sir. On some level, whether that's meeting the timeline, whether it's the project itself meets the funding. So those components, yes, sir.
Okay. And then this is a second point, if I may. It may be inferred and it may be something that was discussed more directly before I was a part of these meetings. But was proximity of maybe a prior loss or a new need as described in an application as a direct result of COVID-19 measured? Proximity to COVID-19, was that measured? I know that we have just general statutory eligibility requirements. But how about just the actual cause and effect relationship between COVID-19 and the request?
If it's okay, Councilman Branham, I'll let Mr. Hinkle answer that. I know it's affirmative, but I will let him answer that.
That's all right. That's correct. Part of the rubric and part of the initial review was reviewing the applications for a connection between a use of funds and an eligible beneficiary. And that initial review was how closely do those align to the enumerated presumptions? Or how closely does that application align to the final rule guidance for the use of SLF RF funds? Have they defined who the beneficiaries are? Have they defined what the cause? And what impacts due to COVID did they endure? And how will the use of funds respond to? How well will those use of funds respond directly to those impacts? Those are all taken into consideration at both at both phases of the of the evaluation.
Okay, I appreciate the response there. It's definitely the number one priority that I had as I was reviewing the applications. So thank you for that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, and I just want to remind everyone that especially when it comes to federal government funds given by the federal government, that if they if, for example, we do grant this money to certain organizations and they determine that, okay, this not wasn't appropriate use, that the county will have to pay that money back to the federal government. So just a reminder. So that's my thing about the risk. The risk is that if they determine it's not appropriate, we will have to pay it back.
So and this is just, I don't know if this is a question or a statement. There was you, Mr. Livingston.
I can wait to get through.
Okay. So with that, one of the concerns that I did have when I was reviewing the applications, and this could very well be a category that they scored low on, but making the direct correlation with the connection of COVID-19. Some of them I was, you know, I was like, I don't see the connection. I didn't see the connection. Some of them, you told me you had a connection in one sentence. You know, that concerns me. It also concerns me when you say that this project was impacted negatively by COVID-19, but yet it's a new program. And to me, those applications put us at a high risk of having, if we fund them, if we fund them, then our exposure could be very great. Because just just being a grants practitioner, I'm looking at this saying, ah, this this don't pass the smell test. And then we fund it, then it goes up to the feds and they're saying, then they and then they agree. And we've made this award. So I would like for either Godhouse or administration to give us really some guidance on how we how we dig down further to make sure that the county is covered by what these applicants are saying that they're going to do. Because there's there I do have some questions about some of them that is very concerning.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So to their point, one of the things that I think Godhouse, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of Godhouse, I'll speak on behalf of me and my team. As we were going through this process, one of the reasons why you talked about the time extensions and the opportunity for individuals to have a more robust opportunity to apply for these funds was because of some of the challenges that we saw in the applications. And as we talked about before, we don't have staff to provide technical assistance. We don't have grant staff to do that. So I know we wanted to provide funding availability, and I think the county has done that. But some of these applicants, as you have reviewed now yourself, they leave opportunities open that may otherwise they could take advantage of because of what they presented. And I don't know, you know, what reasons for that, whether that's what they have available to them or not. But the concern is, as you all have identified, ultimately, we want to provide support through these funds. And we don't want it to turn out to be something that we look back on. And while we try to do something positive, it turns out to be something that is viewed as negative because of things that happen. So. But everything that we've done was to try to identify those applicants that could qualify. And that was a process.
I'm so confused. I'm trying to figure out what the question is going to be. But it appears to me though that I don't know how we'll get to a decision point. It seems like, you know, we're talking about a lot of information that that we don't have. And I'm not suggesting that in fact we don't have it. Maybe we just thought about it. But if we don't have, you know, we're talking about a COVID impact. We're talking about risk factors and things of that nature. Is that something we're going to need before we try to get to a decision point? If so, then we need to figure out how to get it. But right now, I'm not sure where we are and how we get to a decision point. I need a whole lot of whatever. You know, for example, page 13A, if 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 we had the information like COVID impact or risk factor, whatever, it might be simply easy for us to look at items on that page and every council member or committed member, we rank them, we give them one to five. And so we come back and we got some high parts or low parts. We've got to figure out a way to get to a point. And right now, I'm not sure where we are.
I think the whole premise behind this work session today was for us to see who applied, to see what they, you know, the amounts, and then make further determination as to what is need. Some of these questions that are coming forth, what is needed so that we can continue this conversation? And that's that's the goal for today. The goal for today is to have pretty much an open ended dialogue to see where we are, how we're feeling about this process, and perhaps any recommendations that full council can offer to the committee as we move forward. So that was pretty much the goal of the day. I'm not sure, Mr. Hinkle, I don't know if you if you're dancing to say something or to give us some further guidance based upon what Mr. Livingston has shared.
Yes, ma'am. Apologies for fidgeting. But you know, the higher the rank that we we assign these applications, we did that with the final rule in hand and looking through the scope of work of what the applications are proposing and matching that to the enumerated eligible uses as well as the intended beneficiaries. You know, the higher that score indicates that we have a good understanding of what they're proposing and how to align it to the requirements in the final rule to make it an eligible use for for a project.
Mr. Rasio, you had your hand up and then Ms. Newton.
Yes, and I don't know that this really even matters. But just as a reminder to me, did we have any? I know when we when it's time for the county to do grants, we have workshops and those kinds of things. Did we have any of that available to the community when it was time to start preparing applications to help people understand? You know, you can't put a car in your application. That's not going to go through. Like, did we have any guidance for for those folks?
Yes, ma'am. We actually had sessions and we had it right here in the in the council chambers. And then we provided contact information for individuals who were not able to make it to the chambers for those meetings.
Okay. And just for my own knowledge, were those well attended or were they pretty full?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. Newton?
Thank you. So I guess as a follow up to what Ms. Baron and what Mr. Livingston were saying, I guess for me, I recognize that, I mean, sometimes, not to be cliche, you don't know what you don't know. And so it wasn't until I had an opportunity to review these applications that I could see, oh, okay, well, I have this consideration or that consideration. But I certainly want our administrator and our legal staff to opine. But you know, my understanding is that, you know, this was a process that was set by council and we have a process that we're following. And if council, you know, decides to modify the process or make a new process, that those are things at our discretion that we can do using the information that we have now that we didn't have before. And and so that's just where we are. We while we have to follow federal guidelines in terms of what is eligible for ARPA, the way that we distribute the ARPA funds is subject to a process of our choosing.
Ms. Newton, is that a are you providing a recommendation?
No, 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 well, no. Sorry, I guess first I was making a statement. There's just a lot of information going. I need to take better notes of what I want to say. But my my other thing that I was going to say is that my understanding, and obviously, we're taking input from from this work session. We're taking input from the body is that if nothing changed with how we do our process, then what would happen next is that the committee would meet. The committee would make specific recommendations and that those recommendations would then go to council for council to vote up, down, or modify. So that that's the existing process. And alternatively, you know, the committee could take recommendations to council and council could vote up, down, or modify or say, let's change these things about the process. But that this it's just a lot that we're trying to flesh out right now. But that there are additional opportunities for everybody to comment. And that at some point, Mr. Livingston, you know, there will be specific recommendations that will be made. And any council member can make recommendations to the committee or any other part of the body about how how we want to do that. So those are statements. But I would love for someone to correct me if I have have been mistaken in any part of that.
I don't think that you have that. I think you spoke well in that. I do think that this is a very lofty task that we've taken on as council members. And it's one of those things that we've inserted ourselves to do. And many of us have had conversations, whereas we are council member, but we are not grants managers. And so this is a task that we are doing in an in an area that we're not fully staffed to do that. And we recognize that, Mr. Brown. I recognize it even more so the last week or so going through these grants. And so this, as we move forward with this process, I hope that this body will also keep in mind as we move forward with the budget process that if we ever never, ever, ever want to do this again, we have to have the appropriate staff in place to support this. And so I'm going to get off that soapbox. Ms. McBride.
This is the final word. I think that, and I tried to articulate this all during the process in in terms of the application and what was needed on the application. Because I do know grants. But then that's something that we had to work through and I didn't get it across well. But right now, I think, like you said, Ms. Ms. Baron, that we need to move forward in terms of how we're going to correct what we've done and making sure that we have a good process in place and that we find programs that will benefit the citizens of Richland County. Thank you.
Or the Ms. Newton?
Yes, and I'm not sure what you were going to say next. And I hope I'm not jumping the gun. But respectfully, we've got a lot, well, what, how much, when do we say this work session was going to end?
Five o'clock.
Okay, so wow, we have two more hours in this work session. I think we have a lot of information that we're trying to to digest. And there are different ways that we can can go through the rest of the information that we have, whether that's looking at the total recommendations per category, whether it is delving into questions about specific applications or things that we have. I guess I want to make sure, because I feel like based on these applications, we could be here even longer than five o'clock. So I guess my question is, you know, what would please the body or this that that's here now in terms of how we move forward? Are there more specific questions that we want to ask? Do you have a vision for how we spend the rest of our time? I just I get the feeling that there's just a lot of, not just group reflection, but additional personal reflection that we're going to need to take so that we can email our suggestions to Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, for teeing up my thoughts as we move forward with this conversation. And and as many of our COVID ad hoc committee meetings have a tendency to steer either left, right, or in a whole nother new a whole nother direction. This this remains consistent. So one of the things that I did jot down for us to, as we move forward with this conversation, ACA Thomas, is to to do somewhat what we started. And that is to look at each category, take each category, look at the the applicants, what what was requested, the funds, and let's we're going to have a high level conversation about the overall applications. And then at that, at the conclusion of each category, if there are statements or questions, we'll take those statements or questions based upon that category. But noting, as we move forward, please jot down specific questions about applications or specific questions about line item, budget line items. And we're going to get those to ACA Thomas. And then those can be sent back out to the full body prior to us reconvening as a committee. So that's we can move forward that way, ACA Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to the nonprofit assistance, I did want to point out that on the fourth column from the left, you do have the score that each group scored on the rubric. Keeping in mind that each one of those potentially could have scored up to 100. And in the fifth column from the left, or I'm sorry, the sixth column from the left, is their SLF SLRF RF expenditure category that they most appropriately aligned with. So there could be some crossover and that may be why you have some, for instance, in the third project down. But typically, you're going to have a defined SLRF category as well. The far notes, the far to the right shows exactly gives you a little bit of detail on the project. We can expand upon that if people would like to know more about that. So and then, of course, in this category, we did have three pre-funded applicants for the budget process.
ACA Thomas, if you will, please, for the good of the body, as well as anyone else who is listening, SLF RF means what?
State and local recovery funds.
Thank you.
State and local federal recovery funds, excuse me.
Followed to that, then 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 tell me what what a 4.2 means.
That's an SLF RF category 4.2. 4.2 actually listed that for was listed in the regs because I just happen to know it for premium pay for essential workers.
Let's show what category.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. And I can certainly make sure that council gets those categories again.
I think that would be helpful to provide us with either a ledger or or some a footnote so that we can have those kind of at the fingertips. Because we do know that, you know, this has been a process that we've been going over. But now, this is this is the little bible of the day, the bible of the day. So anything that we can compile and put in here to help us through this process will be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get a copy of those. It is several pages long, so it will be in addition.
Thank you. And proceed.
There are no further questions relative to nonprofits. We can move on to page 43, which is workforce training. In the workforce training category, there was $1 million allocated. There were no budget allocations in this category. That means the available allocation is $1 million. The qualified recommendations are 1.471,111 million, which means we have a recommend recommendations of $471,111 in excess of the allocation. The projects in this classification are a nonprofits from the Austin Wilkes Society for Employment Sponsors for Former For Former Offenders. Their automatic score was 87. They requested $80,000. Their SLF RF category is 2.1. And this is to assist those who were formerly incarcerated with seeking employment. The second is the USC Columbia Technology Incubator Workforce Development Accelerator. This is the US, the applicant is the USC Columbia Technology Incubator. Their score was 80. They're asking for $680,400. They too are in a 2.1 SLF RF category. Next is a nonprofit workforce development to strengthen economically disadvantaged families from the Midlands Fathers Fatherhood Coalition. Their score was 79. They requested $50,000 in the same SLF RF category. All of these in this category fall into that category. Next is a digital workforce, a digital workforce digital equity program by the Richland County Public Library. Their score was 79. For this project, they're at seeking $83,750. Next is the workforce training project of the Lower Richland Alumni Foundation by the Lower Richland Alumni Foundation. Their score was 77. Their request is $101,961.25. Next is a synergy success applying as the workforce training by the National Federation of the Blind of South Carolina Successful Transitions. Their score is 77. They're seeking $475,000. And I will open up to any any comments that you may have or would, you know, just ask that if anybody has any specific questions relative to these, they could. To Mr. Pugh's point, several of these on this list do have projects in other categories. And I will provide that in a rubric as well or in a in a schedule as well.
For this, for the sake of conversation where we are now, could you could you give us those at this moment?
I hope I don't miss any. I think the Austin Wilkes Society, the Richland County Public Library, and the Lower Richland Alumni Foundation. And you'll see them come up in later categories.
And when you say later categories, again, I want us to, for the record, they these are the same application or the same applicant proposing to do different services?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Questions? Sabrina?
And just to again clarify, the duplicate applicants that Ms. Thomas listed were the duplicate applicants found on this specific spreadsheet or this chart? There's additional duplicate applicants, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I've broken them all out and can tell you each one, what category each one of them is in. Been about a while that when I was going through that. I can list, I think, for example, I afford that a like for nonprofit assistance, you know, the corporate ministry apply for that one as well as affordable housing, for example. Mill and Center apply for nonprofit.
Thank you.
I want to know.
So we could, what we'll do, Ms., is that we'll use you as a reference point per category as, as our walk-in knowledge of Richland County. You continue to, you continue to never cease to amaze us with your expertise. Thank you so much. Any further questions or comments for the workforce training grants? ACA Thomas?
Thank you, and again, just to point out that that, the recommendations there are $471,111 over the actual allocations available. In educational assistance on page 97, and 97A, there are allocations of $1 million here. There is no budget allocate, budget allocations, leaving $1 million to be allocated. Qualified recommendations are $1,057,422. In the educational assistance grants, the first is of educational studio, helping young readers with learning loss. This is by the Richland County Public Library, which this is the second category that you will see them in as a recommended qualifier. They're requesting $64,500 with a score of 88. The educational assistance project of the Lower Richland Alumni Foundation, the Lower Richland Alumni Foundation is the applicant. This is a second carat, secondary category for them. Their score is 85 with a request for $155,931.75. This is for free tutoring. The public library's request was for Public Library Reading and Comprehension Program. The next is Young CEOs and Leaders of Tomorrow. Applicant is the Lynn Brown Inspires Young CEOs and Leaders of Tomorrow, a score of 80. They're requesting $50,000 for an entrepreneurial camp for students in competing, competing in a shark tank competition. Next is connecting Richland County schools to mental health first aid by SC Thrive. They have a score of 79, and their request is $179,740. Next is comprehensive sex education in Richland County by Planned Parenthood South Atlantic with a score of 78. Their request is $100,000 to provide sexual education to young adults and involve parental discussions. Next is the farm classroom expansion of the Riverbank Society, a score of 78, requesting $125,000. Renovating a classroom to hold more students and uphold social distancing. Next is the Midlands Reading Consortium by the United Way of the Midlands. Mr. Livingston, I'm gonna draw on you. I can't remember if they're, if they have a duplicate or not. The Middle, United Way. And another, they're also in another category. They have a 78 as a score, requesting $200,000 to provide reading help sessions to bubble students at Title I schools. Last is Project Learned by the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Midlands. They score a 77 with $182,250 request to provide additional tutoring hours for students who got left behind during COVID-19. Now entertain any requests or questions.
Ms. Newton?
Ms. Baron, you ever experienced counsel without these shields? You used to just be able to see people. Ms. Thomas, I have a general question and it might not apply to applicants in this, this category. And I apologize, I stepped out earlier. It was a call from my child's school. Whenever I see that on the caller ID, I answer those right away. Two general questions, and if the answer is, it's at council discretion, then that's fine. One question that I had as I was looking over applications was sustainability after the grant period. And I understand that all programs have to start somewhere. But I feel like as I was looking through a lot of different applications, there would be like, well, we're gonna start this thing, but then as soon as funds are gone, we'll try to get another grant. But there wasn't necessarily a sustainability. And I wondered if just someone could give me guidance on, on how that works in terms of nonprofit program evaluation generally. And then the other question that I had, again, and this is just a general, nonprofit grants are not where I usually play. As we look at some programs where obviously you need staff to do some of these things, but just, you know, how it works out in terms of, you know, are grants usually mostly staff? Are, how do our grants shake out? Is that where most of the expenses are going? Are there some best practices in terms of, you know, this is generally how much you fund for staff or how much of a grant is staff? Again, just to give me some basic context to help me as I'm looking at these applications.
To your point, the first question I will answer, yes ma'am, that is a council discretion item. But relative to staffing and staffing levels and the positions, if you're okay with it, I'd like to refer to Mr. Hinkle to provide his expertise.
Sure, can we go back to my first question, which is the council discretion? And I get that, but in terms of, is there a best practice in general looking at grants in terms of the expectation about how sustainable it's going to be if it's not a time-bound program or not really?
I would also defer that to Mr. Hinkle.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You know, we do want these interventions to be sustainable. But, you know, the purpose of grant funding can be for short-term interventions or long-term interventions. And unfortunately, our, you know, that was not part of how we, how we graded it according to the rubric. But certainly can establish those metrics and would require some level of engagement with the applicants to understand that ability to, long-term planning for sustainability of these projects, which we were very hesitant to engage any applicants beyond what was provided to us in the, in the applications. As for a general rule of thumb on commitments to staff time versus general disbursements, it's, it really does depend on the, the individual projects that are being funded. And one of, one of the requirements for the SLFRF funding and something that we did take a look at in our evaluation was the reasonableness of the costs as well as the responsiveness of the project, of the project budget to the, the outcome of, the established outcome of the project. So if, if a, if a project, if a project proposed certain outcomes, but a substantial amount of, of, of budget was committed to what looked like, what looked to be administrative work, our reviewers were, were noting that in their, in their review and making the appropriate grades to reflect that.
That's helpful. And just to be clear, I wasn't requesting that, you know, additional actions be taken necessarily. I just wanted to understand that because, again, I'm not necessarily looking at this category. I just remembered the question. There were many programs where, there were some that were time-bound. Once you do this, it is done and you move on. But there were many others that it said specifically, we want to keep doing this, but we don't know how we're gonna keep doing this. And so I just wanted to see if there were thoughts that had gone to that. Thank you.
McBride?
As a follow-up to sustainability in grants, oftentimes there will be an area in the grant application that describes the sustainability of the project. And I'm not saying that it's needed or not, but we did not do that in this particular project. Probably because of conditions and circumstances. The other part is regarding the staffing. You have to look at your measurable objectives and the activities, and then you correlate all that with the staffing, but the way it was presented on the application is difficult to do.
There are just some cases where, where I looked at an application and it was just, it was hard for me to correlate the staff person, thank you for the language, you know, to correlate this staff person to this outcome. So, thank you.
Be with you. I think that one of the
It may have been a challenge to figure it out sometimes, but I think in each application I read, they did respond to the questions of sustainability.
They did, but sometimes it was like, well, as soon as when we lose this money, we'll just ask somebody else. Yeah.
But it was not detailed and usually they define how to sustainability.
And so to that point, it goes back to note that every category had points. And so some of those, I would venture to say, some of those would be the areas where it is, it's a little lower than, than others. Yeah, so, Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to, I know it's been a little while, but I want to take us back. As we were going through this process, one of the reasons that we had a discussion that the application is as simplistic as it is, is because we talked about wanting to make it as easy as possible for people to apply. There were several conversations about how detailed they should be, what are the additional questions that are asked? And the conversation really settled on, let's only require what the federal government requires or else we may be putting an additional burden on some of the agencies that may not have expertise in this area, but who could otherwise potentially benefit. So, I just want to remind us, that's, that's part of that. So when we get into these conversations, and we've done it with other grants as well, we realize on the back end, we want more metrics, more data and more information. But on the front end, we are asking to simplify, but then on the back end, we ask for complexity. And so we have to figure out a good balance to do that so that you get the information that you're looking for and you don't feel like on the back end, you're asking questions that you don't have answers to that can only be answered by the people who went through the application process. So, it's something that we got to work through, but I do just want to remind you that we wanted a simplistic application.
I just want to add to what Mr. Brown said, and I agree 100%. And that was one of the reasons that, especially, I gave an example of the type of rubric that you use that helps explains how to address each question because they knew what you would be measuring. So I agree with that and thinking that a simplified rubric would have helped a lot. Thank you.
And so I wanted to get us back to where, where we started, this conversation. And, and it's always, I see, Mr. Toracio, it's always helpful, you know, to have conversations like this. And, and we, now that the, we're driving down the street and the car is moving, we realize, hey, we forgot the fried chicken, you know. We forgot, we forgot all these things that we wanted to have when we get in the car and travel on the road, right? So now that the car is moving, we have to still know that we might have forgotten some things. We're gonna note them on the side for the, for the next process or to continue the process. But at the end of the day, the process has started. We have to keep moving with this process. We have some woulda, coulda, shouldas, and we, and we got stripes for it. And we've been noted across the board for doing something different to doing something, probably this might be a good reason why a lot of counties didn't do what we did. Because this is a lot of work, and it is out of our scope of what we do. But I think at the end of the day, we stay true to the reason why we wanted to, to award $16 million is for the good of our communities. And whereas this process is tedious, this process is pushing us, we just have to keep, keep driving the bus down the road so that we can get to the end game with that and making note of all the things. Because, you know, at some point, I'm prayerful that this body is gonna fund a full-fledged grants office and we can say, hey, here's some notes about how we did things and how we didn't do things to help you along the way. Ms. Toracio, you recognize?
Thank you. I just didn't want to move on from this category without noting for public record that I am employed by Planned Parenthood South Atlantic. And so when the time comes to vote, I'm gonna take our, ask our attorney for advice, but I'm pretty sure I'll just have to recuse myself from this category altogether, probably.
Possibly, we'll talk about it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toracio. Any further discussion for this particular area? Not, Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, ma'am. The next category we'll move to is senior assistance, which is on page 174 and on the handout on your desk, 174A. This, again, this 174A is in the front of your book, just for public record. There are two recommendations for funding here. To remind everyone, we began with $1 million in this category. There were no budget allocations that left $1 million to be allocated. And qualified recommendations are at $1,195,105. Those two recommendations are Richland County Home Project, Home Repair Project for Seniors. SC Uplift Community Outreach is the applicant. They scored 85. The request is for $695,104.60. The next is Richland County Aging in Place Project. The applicant is South Carolina Association of Community Action Partnerships. They scored 83 and their request is for $500,000.
Toracio?
Thank you. I'm seeing the notes that these are well-designed programs and very well-designed projects. So that gives me a lot of confidence. My question is, do either of these applicants, have either of these applicants applied under any of the other categories?
I don't believe so, ma'am.
Okay, because, you know, these are home repairs and making sure that people can age in place. So both of those have to do with housing and housing insecurity. They've also both applied to seniors, but I'm curious as to whether perhaps some of these monies could be spent under a different umbrella. I know we don't have any other applicants over the amount or over the score of 70 here. But I'm also just curious as to
They didn't apply for anything else?
They did not apply for anything else. And we have no other applicants that meet our over 70 score under senior assistance.
So to that point, I, you know, I feel the vibe from down there, Ms. Toracio. I do feel the vibe, but what we also have to remember that the rubric, the scoring, all is the process. And even, for instance, in some of these areas where we may say, hey, we have $200,000 left in this category that's left over, if we want to move that, that's gonna be something that we have to take back to full counsel because we voted for a cap of, you know, a million dollars. In some cases, I've even thought about in my head, you know, if we have, like this one is, is over, you know, almost $200,000, if we have one area that's under $200,000, could we move it over here, you know? But all of, all of these conversations, if that is the case, then that would be something that the committee would have to take back to full counsel as a recommendation. Ms. Newton?
Thank you. I'd ask for your indulgence with this for a second. And because this is a work session, I'll mention it. One of the things that occurs to me whenever we do make these awards, I don't want Richland County to get outside of its lane. But I do think it would be helpful to, to really promote the awards that we're making to the extent that we're able to. The reason that this occurs to me is, for example, if you look at some of these grants that are proposed, they're supposed to help everybody in Richland County. Well, while we're giving this money, if everybody in Richland County doesn't know that they're eligible, then it limits who can, can be impacted. And I know as I think about, you know, some of the areas that I represent, it seems like when we spread the word, there's some, there's some road where the road, the word drops off. the word, there's some, there's some road where the road, the word drops off and it doesn't always keep going. And so, again, I, I mentioned this because this is, this is a work session and we're talking about it, but part of what we're trying to do is to do good work in the, in the community and make sure that our citizens have access. It is beyond the scope of the evaluations that you've done, but I just, I mentioned it for the body that as some of these groups say that they're going to serve Richland County, and I, I know that they're going to serve people in Richland County, you know, what are the appropriate things that we are able to do to, to really make sure that the maximum amount of, of our constituents get word and that the people that really need help get help, because sometimes it's tough in some of the, the nether, nether parts of, of the county. So, thanks.
Ms. Newton, would you like the response from administration, or was that just an overall statement?
That was, that was just a statement from the body. If administration wants to respond, they're welcome to, as long as they note that I said I wanted the county to, to stay in our lane. I'm not, I'm not adding any staff or, or anything up here, but, but do think that there's a role we can possibly play.
Brown?
I feel like you would like for me to respond, Ms. Baron.
So, I don't want to respond.
So, in short-
It's, it would be your job.
Yeah. So, in short, these benefits that will be realized through these grants, we want to make sure that the community is aware that the county has actually awarded these funds out and that they have access to them. And we'll utilize the various mediums that we have to do that, whether it's social media, print media, digital media, or otherwise. We will utilize that as a platform to communicate once these awards have been made.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And I think that just to, to lift up further, that this is a part of our strategic plan in telling our story. And so, as we talk about telling our story, this is a part of our story that we will tell to, as I, as I envision it, these are some organizations who are receiving additional... dot, dot, dot. Ms. McBride?
In addition, based on federal guidelines, there's supposed to be geographical equity, and it also depends on the ZIP codes where COVID was prevalent. So, as we look at all of that and determining how these funds will be used, we must take into consideration the federal guidelines. In addition, as I read a lot of the other grants, they said they were going to coordinate with different entities. I think as we began to finalize the process, that there may be special agreements that they have to commit to in terms of memorandums of agreements saying that these other entities will be working with them, because we've got a number of proposals saying that they were going to work with five community agencies. We don't know whether that is true or not. So, oftentimes, there will be memorandums of agreement as a part of the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you. Further?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. If I can add to Ms. McBride's statement, she's absolutely right. And additionally, this would be, these would be subrecipients, and as subrecipients, they would have to have benefactors. And as with the benefactors, they would have to report on who the beneficiaries are and how they are determining those beneficiaries as well.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Nothing further? You may proceed with food insecurities.
Thank you, ma'am. Food insecurity, I'll remind you where we began with this. There was an allocation of $2 million. There were budget allocations of $548,046 that was allocated, leaving an available balance of $1,451,954. The qualified recommendations are $1,939, $939,628, with an overage of $487,674. Going to page 188A, which is also in the front of your book, this is the handout on your desk. Those groups that were pre-qualified are PALs, Items for Food Security. This is Palmetto AIDS Life Support Services. This is a duplicate entity. They scored 82 and are asking for $58,256. A Senior Meals Program by Senior Resources scored 82. They are requesting $822,069. The MHA Food Insecurity, the Midlands Housing, by the Midlands Housing Alliance, scored an 81 with $451,800 requested. This is a duplicate agency. Physicians Fighting Food Insecurity, Prisma Health Midlands, scored 80, requesting $380,003. This is a duplicate request agency. Greg's Groceries in Richland County by Serve and Connect scored 80. They're requesting $77,500. And I do believe they have an additional request as well that was recommended. And then the Community Impact Project by the Nurturing Center scored 80, requesting $150,000. The last item there is just to remind everyone who the budgeted allocation was in FY23. So, again, the requests are 200, I mean, $2,487,674, leaving us with an overage of $487,674.
Madam Chair, can I just ask-
I see you.
Oh, may I ask a clarifying question?
Me?
Ms. Thomas, I was, I was making my notes here. It sounded like you said that, but you used different words, that the Greg's Groceries, or rather, that Serve and Connect also appeared in another category. I'm just confirming that. Thank you.
Recognize Ms. McBride?
With the Senior Meals-
Ms. McBride, could you speak into your mic?
Excuse me. Okay. With the Senior Meals Program, $822,000 plus dollars. And then the last one was $548,000. That $822,000 is in addition to the, to the $548,000?
Yes, ma'am. I understand. It's for future resources.
Okay. Thank you.
Did have a question relative to that same applicant. So, what we're talking about with this, this applicant, it's further expanding the services, or is it, is it a duplication?
I believe it would be further, it would be carrying the services into the future, but if you'll allow me to, I'll check on that and get back with you on it.
I think that that's important to, to highlight, not only for this applicant, but for any other applicant that we've already funded through ARPA funds, because we don't, we want it to be clear about what we're funding, so that as they move forward, there, there is no confusion that this, these two, these are two separate programs and not supplanting the funds in any type of way.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that, that will be something that would cover the applicant as well as the county. Mr. Livingston?
Ms. Baron, I was thinking that $548 was, was what they were currently allocated for now.
That was. That's in their, that's in their FY23 budget.
Right. Probably different, yeah.
All right. And that's, and I think that's how Ms. Ms. Thomas has been indicating. So, those items at the bottom, or I think she, you start there, these are items, items that we presently have already funded through our grant cycle, through our ARPA funds. And so, those organizations have already been funded with ARPA funds initially, at the beginning of our grant cycle. Senior Resources is one of those organizations that we funded, as well as like Community Relations Council and some other ones. But I think that it's, it's, we need to be clear for the applicant and for the county, that these are two different projects being funded from the same source of funding.
Yes, ma'am. We would make sure that there was no duplication.
Tratio, yes?
Take a deep breath and make a general statement about this category that will also apply to my feelings about some other categories. So, in our applicants and in these recommendations, I see a lot of the sort of same that we've always done. There's one applicant in particular who says, we're going to do a feeding program, or we're going to do, you know, handing out groceries, but we're just going to have them handed out by a different class of person. And so, that's our big and new different idea for dealing with food insecurity right here in Richland County. Again, I will just make a statement that this is a fairly good pot of money that we have an opportunity to make a real impact in some of these issues that we have. I don't see anything in here about, you know, I don't really see a whole lot of things that look like new or different ideas that are innovative, that could really put a pot of money like this to use. It's really just another, you know, another group that just wants to hand out another box of food, but maybe instead of the box of food being handed out by this kind of volunteer, they're being handed out by a different volunteer. That's my own personal statement, and I just feel strongly about this, and this is my opportunity to make such a statement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for this category? Ms. Thomas, we can proceed to broadband?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Page 229, page 229A, which is also in the front of your book. Broadband services, to remind everyone, there's $2 million allocated to this program or to this category. There were no budget allocations, which means there's $2 million available. The qualified recommendations are $2,624,330, leaving an overage of $624,330. Those projects that were qualified are the broadband expansion for 4th District of Richland County by Columbia International University, scoring an 89, requesting $297,746.13. The Richland County Recreation Committee Technology Infrastructure for Underserved Communities by the Richland County Recreation Commission, scoring an 87, requesting $1,318,884.14. Home Spot Bridge, Bridging the Divide, Digital Divide by the Richland County Public Library. This again is a duplicate request or a duplicate application. I believe this is the third application for this group, scoring an 85, with $207,700 requested to acquire 250 hotspots for checkout. And then lastly, the Village at Lee Court Broadband Services by the Greater Columbia Community Development Corporation, scoring an 84, requesting $800,000. I believe this is also a duplicate request for a group. You will note that there is a note in the far right-hand column on the last that the wifi, that, that request would have to be vetted a bit further. Madam Chair?
It looks like Ms. McBride maybe was going to raise her. No, I'll let you go first, Ms. Plin. Oh, sorry. I, I feel like this is not a question that you're going to be able to answer, but it's a question that I have, so I'm going to ask anyway. There are a lot of additional dollars, it seems like almost every day, that are being announced and awarded as it relates to broadband. And first, let me say, I 100% or 200%, however, whatever percent I can support broadband services I do. I guess I'm just wondering, as we look at all of those dollars that are happening, as we look at additional investments that the state is making in broadband, I don't want to call it a duplicative effort, because it might not be exactly the same thing, but, you know, is there a way of knowing where some of these efforts might be redundant, or maybe not as critical, because of some other funding that is happening in the area? So, I don't, I don't know if my question is clear, and if it is clear, I don't know that you can answer it, but it's a question.
Yes, ma'am. It's clear. No, ma'am, I can't answer it.
Okay.
Oh, I, I might challenge you just a little bit, ACA Thomas. And that is, in the application, we do ask about additional funding sources, or if they've received ARPA funds in the past. So, to some degree-
To some degree, yes.
To some degree, we can chart some funds that are being used. I don't, I don't know that we probably go dig as deep to say, you know, what those funds are being used for. And that may be something that as we move forward with making awards, that we do ask another layer of questions for that, to avoid duplication of services.
And if, if I may, Ms. Baron, I, I don't, I wasn't exactly going at the question from that angle, because I do know that we asked, did you get a grant for something else? But hypothetically, you know, the, the South Carolina broadband effort, if they're going into your community and they themselves are going to wire your whole community, then you would not have needed to apply for ARPA funds to do it. It's just something that coincidentally, and lucky you, would have been done. And so, I'm going to just take it as an action item to reach out to the state broadband office, just for my own personal edification, but I figured I would ask if that was something that we knew about.
I would.
If it can state, federal, and private funds for broadband in our state.
So, Ms. Ms. McBride?
That's true with all the fake state and federal funds that are out there, and that there is the state broadband, you said, that have, I think that we need to look into that. And I know that at the last county association meeting, they gave a presentation about all the money that is out there regarding broadband. So, I think this is something that we really carefully need to monitor and make sure that we are not duplicating the funding for these initiatives. And also, we need to be very careful in where the areas that they will be funding, to look at all the areas. So, that's, I think, Ms. Newton, that you hit on a very important point in this particular area. Thank you.
And if I may, I believe that the funding that is being allocated from the South Carolina broadband office is actually going to providers, whereas some of these appear to be providing units directly to the home. So, there's always the getting it to the home, but the affordability at the home as well. And I know some of them have to work with it, but that's another big piece of this that I, and that did not mean to be flippant. I was just that I, I don't know how those work together. I'm unfortunately not that good with broadband.
So, and I would like to ask Mr. Hinkle, you know, from, from a management perspective, if you can provide this body with any guidance as to, and it, broadband is the discussion, but I would venture to say that there are some other hot topics, like food insecurity, that are receiving large troughs of money from federal entities as well. How do we avoid those duplication of services, or to avoid not put, not putting our best foot forward when it comes to awarding funds to areas that have already receiving these funds?
Absolutely. Duplication of, I'm not, I'm unmuted. Duplication of benefits is certainly a, a risk when you're, when you're making grants. And part of our risk assessment process, the process that we will engage actually one-on-one with the subrecipients, as well as our ongoing monitoring process, will be to monitor state and federal level clearinghouses on awards that, that they publish from their own grant lines and, and looking for our subrecipients. And when we do see an award that has been awarded to an active subrecipient, is to engage with them to make sure that this isn't a duplication of benefits, that there is no commingling of funds, and that there are defined levels of scopes of work for each project that, that can, that can be aligned to specific expenditures from, from both of those awards.
And so, how often will you do these checks?
It will be part of our compliance review and at, at least three times. One at the risk assessment, one when we do a desk review or a compliance review based on the level of risk assessed by the client, by the subrecipient. And again, when we go to actually closing out the project, at, at project completion. I do want to say also that we do have another team, a guidehouse team, that is working with the state of South Carolina that is, is helping them with the, with broadband and other ARPA, ARPA-related dispersment. So, we do have a, an in, an internal path to, to checking in on, on other South Carolina programs.
Thank you. Newton?
Thank you. And again, this is a general question that's not related to this category, but Mr. Hinkle just helped me think of it. And it's about, and we can save it for the end of the meeting, Ms. Baron, if that's more appropriate, what the process we think would look like after we award grants? So, we know that there's still specific recommendations that have to be made to council, but for example, Mr. Hinkle just said, well, you know, they're going to be, we would have additional- conversations with recipients and subrecipients, we're going to monitor this or monitor that. So I would just be curious to understand what the, the process looks like on the other side of grant award. And again, Ms. Baron, if that's an answer that you think would be most appropriate at the end of our work session, I'm happy to wait until then for an answer.
Let's, let's wait, because I think that would be something that our staff and our consultant can give us guidance as we look forward to next steps. Anything further? Next category, Ms. Thomas, affordable housing.
Affordable housing, to remind everyone, there's $4 million actually allocated in this category. There were no budget allocations, so that means the available allocation is $4 million. Qualified recommendations come to $2,99,852, leaving an excess of $1,901,48. Those groups that actually were qualified and recommended based upon their applications were Re-Housing Richland, the cooperative, by the Cooperative Ministry, scoring an 86, requesting $382,732.42. The Gable Oaks Revitalization, protecting a precious asset, Richland, precious Richland County asset, the Greenville Housing Fund, scored an 83, requesting $980,000. The NAACP Housing Navigator Program, the applicant is the NAACP Empowerment Programs, Inc., and the Columbia branch of the, of the NAACP, scoring an 81, requesting $327,927. Accessible Pathways to Home Stability for People with Disabilities by Abel South Carolina, scoring an 80, requesting $309,193. The Recover Initiative, the applicant is the Good Samaritan Community Development Corporation, the scoring is 76, requesting $100,000. And A Bridge to Prosperity, the Mighty Chariot Wheel Stewardship and Learning Center, scoring 87, requesting $330,044.
I, I was waiting for you, Ms. Tracy Young. I know you wanted to, to start first with this category.
I'm not usually the most talkative member, so this is slightly unusual for me. So I'll just, so I'll first say the nice thing. So we have some money, we would have some money left over, even if we allocated every dollar that was asked for and approved, there would still be money left in this bucket. Presumably, council could make another choice about what to do with that, those funds, right? So we could decide to, I don't know, do something very impactful with those funds. The other thing that I will say that is maybe less, I would like to point out that out of the $4 million possibly allocated to affordable housing, there are zero new housing units being pulled online with these applications. The best we can do is maybe, you know, the, the repairs for 215 units. Hopefully, that would make living more possible, dignified for the people who would be living those places. But again, we're, I, I am, again, just not seeing the potential for impact that I would have liked to seen in these grant applications.
Tracy Young, Mr. Livingston?
I actually totally missed the boat on this one. I was under the assumption that this is geared more toward affordable housing as opposed to rehab and repairs and rental assistance and so forth that's listed here. I was thinking there was an opportunity for folks to actually get a house, you know, like down payments or loan assistance or building housing units. I was expecting stuff like that, like that out of this category as opposed to what's here. And like I said, there's just a misinterpretation on my part, probably, but...
No, sir.
But that's what I was thinking about when I, when we was talking about affordable housing.
No, sir, there's no, and this was, I just, I want to...
What I'm getting here is totally kind of different from what, what I expected.
So you, you are absolutely correct, because I made the same note when, when the committee set forth to address affordable housing, it was to address our affordable housing crisis. And these projects that are, that are listed, whereas, you know, they, they meet some guidelines of, you know, but they don't meet the vision that we had for this category. And that's the new houses that's addressing the need that we have here. This, to me, I would venture to say all of them on the list are, well, with the exception, I, I think the Navigator project assists with, with housing needs, but they are, all these applicants here are more organizations that, like you say, Mr. Livingston, they're rehabbing homes, they're, they're fixing what they presently have, they're not addressing the need at all. Mr. Pugh?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo the same sentiments. I mean, we just completed a program where we were helping people with utility and rent some time ago, and we did a great job with it. And this is also, this, this also is like, to me, this is like recycling these funds, doing the same thing over and over again. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. McBride?
I concur somewhat with what's being said, but there is a need for affordable housing, there is a need to assist citizens with problems that they already have in fixing the housing. And so all of this needs to be addressed, and some of them are addressed in another category, some of it is addressed here. But I, I have, do have concerns regarding, from the thousand-year flood, we still have people that have not had their homes repaired from the thousand-year flood. That's something we're going to have to address as a council at another time. But the issue is that, you know, can we provide these services to have it corrected? That's one thing, to do these houses. The other issue that I have is, again, hoping big companies or whatever, that they have, they're already receiving federal assistance for low-income housing and other housing, and then we giving them additional money. So this is the one that I mentioned about the tax incentive. One of those categories is that where Richland County gave them a tax incentive, and now they're asking for funds to do the same thing again. So this is the category that I mentioned initially. So again, I sort of concur with my colleagues that the affordable housing initiative was totally different from, I guess, what we were expecting, but then we gave general directions in terms of how these fundings would be used. I don't know if we have funds to assist anyone in, in purchasing a home, you know? So that's something I don't know how to address, Councilwoman Baron, but, and colleagues, but that is something that we probably may need to take a second look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Branham, and then Ms. Newton.
There was a comment towards the beginning of the meeting about ARPA funds and restrictions on things they could be used for, and there was a comment about real estate, as I recall, with that, but somebody be, be able to speak to that in light of these recent comments?
I'm going to yield to Mr. Hinkle, I think he made that comment.
Yeah, the, the acquisition of real property and the construction and investment into capital expenditures, like putting things like that in, carry with it additional federal requirements that we do need to make sure that the subrecipient is able to maintain throughout the life of the project and, and the life of the, of the award.
Okay, thank you.
But it's not explicitly, that's not one of those that are explicitly prohibited. No, no, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. Ms. Newton?
Thank you. And again, just, and I apologize for stating the obvious, but we've been here for a long time, and we've looked at a lot of papers, so just this, if this doesn't meet our expectations for what we were thinking, just again, that we have discretion to, to look at how it is that we want to address this, and this is clearly an area where we do have some questions and, and maybe want to take a different look. I will also say, whatever it is that we end up with, as you look at addressing the housing crisis, I think that, you know, $4 million unfortunately can turn into a drop in the bucket, and so we're going to have to take a bigger look at what we do in those areas, but, you know, we are not, we, we do have discretion to go back and look at this, and if the majority of the body says, you know, that this wasn't what we were thinking, then there are other options. Now, moving from my comment to a question, are there, you know, not that they're the only ones, but a few avenues that, that staff might be able to recommend in this area? For example, it could be we look at expanding our criteria or expanding, looking at our rubric, and so maybe there, there are providers who, you know, we, we look at another level that those providers were all focused on providing affordable housing in a different way, because ironically, or not ironically, it seems to me if that that's what you're doing, by necessity, that ups your risk, which affects your score, but if that's what we were really looking at, then we might need to look at that or having additional conversations with those who apply. Anyway, that, that's me talking, but I would just throw it to staff. Are there some initial recommendations that come to you in addition to, you know, others that you may have later?
I'll throw something out a little, maybe more creative.
Oh, for it.
So, in this particular area, because a lot of these things are maybe more long-term investments than short-term, which affects the expenditure of, of the funds in a certain timeframe, and also it carries along with it the additional monitoring, long-term, one of the things you may consider as you look at an area like this is shuffling the money that you use. So for example, what I mean by that is, if you decide you wanted to do something with affordable housing that does, that where you have limits with COVID-19 funds, maybe you want to allow the county to use the COVID-19 funds, right, for what it needs to do to address it, and then you supplant, not, that's not a good word, use, but maybe you use general fund dollars, right? So if you want to be creative in terms of dealing with what you're trying to accomplish, with whatever that looks like. So just the idea there was just to think differently about how you use the funds, because in this particular area, you know, maybe the, and I don't know, I don't, I might look at the applications, but maybe the, the conversation that you all were having about what you wanted to accomplish may more align with a longer-term fix or addressing that these funds don't allow for. And so the persons that rose to the top were more consistent with a shorter-term situation that can be addressed now, rather than a long-term, you know, look. So just, hopefully that provides some additional ways to look at it.
Right, and if I may just say, you know, thank you, Mr. Brown, for that suggestion, and certainly we'll continue to welcome any others, but I, I think that that was, was very helpful and duly noted, and I think you said it better than I was able to articulate it, that, you know, kind of by necessity, the things that we were thinking make you score lower, and so then we've ended up looking at things that, that might not necessarily have been what we envisioned, but I, I do appreciate the creativity that you suggested.
I also agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Brown, because during the time that we were developing the grant application, and now, there are some real emergency situations that, that we could use some of the funding for immediately, and that these applications are not really meeting some of the areas that are essential, even though they are important, they are not essential, and that at a later point, we might be able to address many of them. So I agree 100%. I look at the applications, the purpose, and what can benefit the citizens most. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Ms. English, welcome, and you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Baron, but that time has passed, and I don't want to prolong anything, so I can wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Let me just clarify one thing when I made my point, and I wasn't suggesting that we shouldn't repair homes, do the things that, that some of the things that are listed here, I'm just suggesting that we, we just left out affordable housing, that's all.
Understood. Yes, sir. We, I think we, we're clear, we're clear with you, with what you were saying. Ms. Thomas, we're going to move on to unhoused persons or noted as homeless.
Yes, ma'am. For unhoused persons, the allocation was $2 million. There was a budget allocation of $200,000, leaving $1.8 million available for allocation. Qualified recommendations are $1,894,950, which means an overage of $94,950 from the allocation. Those applicants that were deemed qualified were Services for Unhoused Persons by Austin Wilkes Society, they scored an 86 and requested $320,000. This is a, an applicant that has multiple recommended, recommended applications. The Compass Transitional Homes by the Compass Development Corporation, scoring 82, asking for $38,950. Pathways Home by Restoration 803, scoring 81, requesting $10,000. MHA Shelter Services from the Midlands Housing Alliance, scoring 75, requesting $476,000. Eddings Help House Veteran Recovery Housing by Eddings Help House, scoring 74, requesting $50,000. Services for Unhoused Persons through Mental Illness Recovery Center, scoring 73, requesting $1 million. The budget allocation was made to Midlands Housing Alliance, which is, which is also known as Transitions, and that was for $200,000, as I pointed out earlier.
Questions or comments about this category? Have been none? Yes, sir.
Again, about, well, to the extent that you could hire personnel, staff with these funds, I mean, occurring...
There is the, if I, if I, if I recall Mr. Hinkle's statement, there is the capacity to hire individuals, however, it has to be relative and relevant in the project scope, so it should not be the sole source of funds and request, and there should be more that should be going to the project, so it should be relevant and relative to the project.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Thomas, it looks like we're down to our last group here, which is Youth and Recreation Services?
Yes, ma'am. For Youth and Recreation Services, there was $1 million allocated, there was no budget allocation, the available allocation then is $1 million. Qualified recommendations are $887,234, leaving an overage of $112,766. Those that are, have applications that are deemed qualified are Richland Compass Expansion by Serve and Connect. This is a, this is an applicant that does have another qualified application in another category, they scored 87, requesting $72,293. Richland County Warrior Path for Veterans and Active Duty Service Members in Residence of Richland County, the Big Red Barn Retreat, requesting $100,000 with a score of 82. Equip Corps by Abel SC, scoring 80, requesting $232,127. Nonprofit Healthy Learners Removing Health Barriers for Low-Income Children, this is by Healthy Learners, scoring 78, requesting $100,000. Growing Healthier Schools Using Telehealth Services in Richland County, this is Prisma Health Midlands, this is an applicant that had a qualifying application in another category, scored 78, requesting $282,814. Nonprofit Community Reduction of Violence by the Midlands Mediation Center, scoring 74, requesting $100,000, and this applicant did have an application in another qualifying category.
Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you. So, this is a question taking us back, because I remember making the motion that we... that we increase the funding here from $500,000 to $1 million. And the intent of my motion and the intent of this category for me were services that were for youth. And the way it's listed here is youth and recreation as opposed to youth recreation or youth and youth recreation. So I guess I wonder how this was billed to the public because my clear intent and what I thought was the intent of council when we called it youth services was that it be for young people.
I can say that it was listed as Youth and Recreation Services.
Okay.
And that would have been what people were applying for?
Okay. Okay, well, then I'll just note that for the body. And I guess, you know, as always, our intent can change, but that was the conversation that we had. And so as we look at, you know, awarding funds in this category, I would love that we stay true to that intent for youth. Thank you.
Other questions? There aren't any other questions. I think this is the time in the conversation where, or in this work session, that we start to move forward and think about next steps. So, I'm sorry? Which one? That was at the top. We did those at the beginning, I do believe.
Start over again.
Let's don't start over again, sir. We did those already. So, so ACA Thomas, walk us through as you see next steps for this body.
Well, we're certainly anxious to get any questions, recommendations, considerations from the committee and from council so that we can go back and work with Guide House to get the information that you request to be able to have the information necessary to be able to make allocations, whether that be from a staff level or from a Guide House level. So if we can come up with a timeline for that to happen, then from there, we can actually come back with information for consideration and answers for everyone's questions. We could actually have a session where we could actually review those with the committee to let them know what the questions were, what we have found out. And depending on those actions, the rest of the agenda would be billed from that time. But as if I understood earlier, the intent there would be that the committee would like for it to come back to the committee with those answers.
Yes. So to be clear, our next steps, and I want to pin a date to get these questions back to administration. And Mr. Brown, is it your desire that those go right to ACA Thomas?
That'll be helpful. Yes, please.
Okay, so any questions relative to the overall process? Or any recommendations relative to the overall process or specific applications or applicants? If we could, could we, by, if we give a two-week window? And that would be for March the 28th. And if we could have those into ACA Thomas by close of business, which I'll say is 5:00 on the 28th. And then from there, we will set a committee meeting to review information, noting that it's open to, you know, all council members. I would encourage all council members, as we finalize this process, to come in and be a part of this, be a part of our committee meeting so that we can flesh out a lot of this in the committee so that we can avoid any delay that may come as a result of being in full council. The late, great Chip Jackson told me, as I prepared to come on council, that the work is done in the committees. And so if we get the work done in the committees, then when we get to full council, we can move forward. So those are our next steps in charge. I know today was a lot to take in and a lot to work through. I hope that we can continue to dig through these applications over the next couple of weeks and lift up questions. I know I've got two sheets of questions already just that came out of today. And then, and I think that I want to challenge council to also look at, we had some conversation that came out of this meeting, for instance, for affordable housing. If that is, if we did not meet the goal that we set forth, then let's start to look at creative ways. If we, you know, if that $4 million, we want to move to another place, this is a great time to start to think towards those items as we move forward to taking this entire document to full council. So I would encourage you to make those recommendations to ACA Thomas as a part of this process.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Newton?
All right, not to stop our closing momentum, but I recommend that we go ahead if we can. And not, it doesn't have to happen from the dais, but set the committee meeting date since we've already set the date for when people have to have income input. Staff can kind of say, this is about how long we think it'll take us. And then that way, for the many people who have questions after this process, we can tell them, well, the next committee meeting is X date.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. That's the goal. I just didn't want to, it's three of us on the committee, so we'll circle back and come up with a date that, after speaking to ACA Thomas, that would, and it would probably kind of, we won't be able to, and I may be speaking out of turn, to determine that committee meeting until she sees how many questions she has and the complexity of those questions. So even, anything further? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Oh, moved.
Again.
Ms. Carrillo?
Thank you.